Oh, I didn't know that. Oops. I call the order, the August 10th, 2017 business meeting, and ask Don Krupp, the County Administrator, to please take the roll.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce for you this morning Amanda Keller, who is representing County Council's office today for us, and of course, Mary Rathke, our clerk to the board. So, let's start with the roll. Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Bernard?
Here. And this after, or this morning, Commissioner Schrader is out, and Commissioner Humbertson is with our Chinese delegation, meeting with the governor today, our sister city, and somebody got their name?
Sister County.
Sister County.
Guanyang.
What is it?
Guanyang County.
Guanyang County. Anyway, so please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the first part of it is citizen communication from a citizen, and I need some ID on this. Les Poole.
Well, it's summertime, so it seems to be that I'm first and last, but if I don't show up, then no one's here to enlighten you from the side of the aisle. Les Poole, I live in Gladstone. I want to start by, I want to thank Gary Schmidt for volunteering to meet with us. I had mentioned and made a request about the need for some, just more input and more direction on where we go with Damascus. And as someone that's probably best identified right now as an advocate for roads, the concerns out there are pretty great, and I don't need to get into a bunch of detail about that, but the growth is coming, the traffic is growing, and that's just one of the things we face in the part of Damascus that isn't conveniently being brought into Happy Valley. So, a real conversation needs to take place there that involves the folks that are out there in the no man's land, that's what's left of Damascus. With all the planning and all the things you folks have to do, it's really, really just another big load for you inheriting Damascus, and I'm sure you probably would have rather not had to do it, but here we are. A couple other things. One is, I was thinking about the veterans and the fact that the Purple Heart Day was August 7th, and I was involved in that and glad to help, glad to testify in Salem on it and help make it happen. And it reminded me that Senate Bill 694 got a hearing and made some progress, but never made it to the finish line. And 694 would increase the property tax exemption for disabled veterans, and that's something that we've got to keep on our radar, along with a thousand other things, because we're going to get that done. And I'm here to help. And ironically, that concept came from Mac Woods, who's no longer with us. And I was thinking about going to the fair next week, and somebody said, "Are you going to go to the rodeo?" And I said, "Probably." And I recalled, it was either two or three years ago, at the start of the rodeo, if you go out, and when you're out there, look at the grandstands, there's the big main covered grandstand, and to the side of it, there's some large uncovered seating, bleacher seating, and next to that is a large tree. And right before the rodeo, people were freaking out because there was a huge, huge bees nest in that tree, and people couldn't sit down. And Mac was one of those guys, I'd seen him do it before, could walk up to the bees and, you know, they'd jump on his hand, and he'd talk to them, and they'd fly away. So anyway, Mac got out, got up there, cut that bees nest, and walked away with the bees nest in his hand, while everyone was awed, and everyone stayed away, and nobody got stung, not even him. So, it was just an interesting connection between the fair and Senate Bill 694 that I wanted to share with you today. And next week, I'm planning on being at the fair, and if I'm there, I'll give you another three or three and a half minutes. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, after that, we have no other cards, so we're going to move on to a couple of public hearings. Don?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have three public hearings this morning. The first two involve boundary change proposals, and the first one is for a board order for boundary change proposal number CL 17-006, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. And we have our boundary change consultant, Mr. Ken Martin, here to talk about this item with you.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a proposed annexation into Clackamas County Service District Number One, of which you are the governing body. But just as a reminder, in this instance, you will be sitting as the Board of County Commissioners in your capacity as the Boundary Commission for Special Districts located within Clackamas County. Mr. Ken Martin is here as the county's boundary change expert to provide you with more details on this specific proposal.
Good morning. This is just another straightforward annexation. It's for development in Happy Valley, and as you know, Happy Valley uses the district as its provider of sewer service. This is a 28-acre piece. It's going to be developed with single-family, multifamily housing eventually, and they need to get into the district, and we'd recommend approval.
Great. Any questions? I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal number CL 17-006, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve a board order for boundary change proposal number CL 17-006, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
Okay, the next item is also a boundary change proposal. It's a board order for boundary change proposal number CL 17-007, annexation to Clackamas River Water. And again, I'll invite Ms. Keller and Mr. Martin to address you on this.
So this is a boundary proposal for Clackamas River Water, of which you are not the governing body, so it makes it a little bit more clear as to which hat you're wearing. It's a parcel located within unincorporated Clackamas County, and Mr. Martin will provide you with the details on that proposal.
This is a piece in the rural area. That district is a very large district which serves both urban and rural. This is quite a bit out in the countryside. It's a single property, and the property owner simply wants to annex to the district to get water for a single-family dwelling. They have water, the district has water in the area that can serve the property, and we'd recommend approval.
Great. Any questions? I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal number CL 17-007, annexation to Clackamas River Water.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the board order for boundary change proposal number CL 17-007, annexation to Clackamas River Water. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Really a challenging issue.
Okay, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this third public hearing this morning is a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and a budget reduction for fiscal year 2017, 2018. And our budget manager, Diane Padilla, is here to present this item to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a supplemental budget. The required newspaper notice was published in the Lake Oswego Review on August 3rd. What we're requesting to do is have your authorization to make two inter-fund transfers into the debt service fund, so that we can accumulate sufficient monies to call the 2,000 Altamont Local Improvement District bonds a bit early and save some interest, specifically about $227,000 in interest savings. We'd like to move $445,658 from the LID construction fund and $499,842 from the general fund. That added together with the assessment revenues already in the debt service fund will give us what we need to pay off $1,400,000 in principal and about $62,000 in interest to call the bonds. Do you, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Now, Altamont, you said, is where?
The Altamont, LID. Where is it? It's off of 82nd Avenue.
Okay, so it's up off, it's Happy Valley area.
Yes, I would say so.
That's kind of what I thought.
And it was, it's been a while. It was a 2,000 issue.
Okay, so this was for a road project? The debt was for what?
Well, let me see what I've got. Was it a road project specifically? It says the original issue was 5.1 million used to refinance costs of the county's Altamont Local Improvement District project. That didn't tell you much. The final payment would be due in 2020, I can tell you that, so we're paying them off a little bit early. I think this was to stabilize a hill, that, there's kind of a high area there.
The only reason I'm concerned is I want to just make sure this has nothing to do with attempts by Happy Valley to annex the Altamont area.
Oh, no, this is our debt, and we were just trying to pay it off early.
We're not giving the property or the, to anybody, and that's what I'm...
Just hoping to save some interest.
Okay, well, that's, that's all I needed to know. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had questions along your lines, in that the, what we've been given, as far as information, doesn't give us really the specifics, except it appears that it is just procedural saving interest. I just want to confirm that this is good government. It's to save resources down the line to do this transfer now. That's how I see this, but we don't have the details as to...
Okay.
But it doesn't seem that the details are important in this sense, that what's most, I mean, the details of the program and that, all of the substance around the policy. The real issue here is good government, saving interest, and doing the inter-fund transfer so that we save the taxpayers.
Yes, the issue at hand is just to call the bonds. There's no ownership being transferred. It is a county obligation. We would have to have paid it at any rate by May 2020, but we're close enough now. We've received most of the assessment revenue we will get. We will get a little bit more in the next couple of years, but it seemed like the time was right to stop paying interest.
Yes, and that makes a lot of sense to me. If we can save interest, we want to do that.
All right, great. I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Les?
When I saw this on the agenda, I, the question came to mind, and it's just a general question, because folks will ask me the same question. I have no answer. I understand the wording, but I think part of the confusion is where we've got a supplemental budget that's greater than 10%, but yet we're making a budget reduction, and to the layperson, that doesn't make sense. So, I think, you know, some of it's just the terminology where people look at it and go, "Well, what's going on here?" when, in essence, you're doing some things to save interest and doing some refinancing, from what I see.
Actually, the supplemental budget and reduction is just part of a greater title. In this case, there are no reductions. Specifically, what we're doing is recognizing a transfer from the LID construction fund and from the general fund into the debt service fund to pay the debt. And then the second piece is the Local Improvement District Construction Fund. It needs to transfer its current budget from contingency and materials and services into an inter-fund transfer category, so that it can then send it to the debt service fund.
Yeah, and I know it's a category, and that's why you kind of, okay, how does this fit this title?
It's part of the title.
And just to clarify, in case folks are watching, Altamont Drive is the extension east off the end of Johnson Creek Boulevard at 92nd. And back when they did the project, some things could have been engineered differently, and they had a lot of water and runoff, and 92nd was closed off and on for a while. And so, I think they had to do this, but they got it all done in the end, and people are happy up there. And no, we're not going to give that property to Happy Valley. Thank you.
It's also one of the most dangerous roads in the winter in Clackamas County. Every year, you see a video of somebody going down that hill. Anyway, if there's no further questions, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve a resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2017, 2018. Any further discussion?
I just want to just add that for, it was, perhaps wasn't said, but in a way it was, there's, Oregon budget law requires any budget line change that's 10% or greater be done through a hearing process, because the budget's approved by a hearing process. So this is a, we're just abiding by, by budget law, state budget law.
This is the third one on this specific issue, right? I heard that.
I don't know if that's the case.
I heard you say this was...
The third one this year.
The public hearing this morning.
Oh, okay. That's what I heard. Okay, great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The next item is the consent agenda. Wait, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so I'm going to practice my diction and recite the consent agenda I offered you this morning. Under A, Health, Housing and Human Services, this is the consent agenda for Thursday, August 10th. The first item we have is approval of a grant agreement with LifeWorks Northwest for Relief Nursery Services, children, youth and families. The second one is approval of Amendment Number One to the Intergovernmental Agreement with North Clackamas School District for Kindergarten Partnership Innovation Services. The third is approval of Intergovernmental Agreement Number 8422 with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority in partnering with Clackamas County Health Centers for Participation in Oregon's Alternative Payment and Care Methodology Program. Item B, under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of Amendment Number Two to the Local Agency Agreement Number 29634 with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Sunnyside Road Adaptive Signal System Project. And, Number Two, approval of Contract Amendment Number Two and Renewal Number Three for On-Call Hydrogeological Peer Review Services with GSI Water Solutions for the Planning and Zoning Division. C, the Finance Department, we have a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2017, 2018. And we have a resolution for Clackamas County for a transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2017, 2018. Under D, Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. And under Item E, Community Corrections, approval to apply for a grant between Criminal Justice Commission, Justice Reinvestment, and Clackamas County Community Corrections to develop a pre-trial program. Under Item F, Public and Governmental Affairs, approval of a contract for publication printing services with Eagle Web Press. Under Item Four, Development Agency, approval of a debt disposition agreement and post-closing escrow and development agreement with G Properties LLC. And then, Item Five, Services, Number Five, Street Lighting, approval of Amendment Number One to the Cooperative Improvement Agreement between Oregon Department of Transportation and Clackamas County Service District Number Five for McLaughlin Boulevard Street Lighting. And that is the consent agenda for August 10th, 2017.
Do any of the Commissioners wish to remove an item or pull an item for discussion on the, in the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make a comment about the LifeWorks Northwest and Relief Nursery Services. These are really important services in that providing support to families with children when they are very, very young helps to promote healthy brain development and reduce need for public services later. These services are probably the most important thing that we do for children and families, and to look at preventing challenges such as criminal activity and depression, anxiety for folks later in life, is to get to families early, get to children early, and the services are essential. So I just, this is just something that's on our consent agenda, easy to look over it, but really, really important services that we are involved in. So I just wanted to mention that.
I actually pulled those two, two to mention them, because oftentimes, people ask, you know, "How can the county help with, with our school system?" And the relief nursery, of course, is prior to that, but kindergarten
Yes.
is really also very important. And that's one of the areas that we do help the school system. The other, it would be interesting to know what are the other areas. I mean, I see these come every, once in a while, where we're supporting clinics in the high schools and stuff like that. Though, maybe a little more information for us, talking points on those issues, where we are also funding school, measures in schools.
You can follow up?
Yes. I think that'd be great. Paul?
Yeah, I just want to just say that most people need to recognize that ideally, that the, well, the fact is that a lot of these monies come from either federal or state grants or funding through the state legislature. And absent that, without that, we wouldn't have the means to do that. So, sometimes people say, "Well, why are you doing all these things or funding those things when you're not doing other things like roads and so forth?" And I got to remind them, this is not a property tax-based thing. This is something that is funded often through the legislature or federal funding or a combination. And we are the provider for those services, and that's what counties do really across the state. So, just want to acknowledge that, and our staff are doing all the good work providing those services.
And just for the record, for this particular consent agenda for relief nurseries, it is 72,000 of County General Fund.
Yeah, great. Okay, with that, I'll enter, I mean, all those in favor, say?
We need a motion.
Oh, we, I thought you did make a motion.
No, I will, though, if I can find my...
I thought we did, I would have been...
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I know we made a motion, but go ahead.
Yeah, second.
I know we made a motion, because then I said, "Any further discussion?" And then we vote on it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Before you do an update, I thought I'd ask Amanda, what's the difference between a statutory and a, in a charter county? Just kidding.
[laughing]
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so I've got a couple of items to share with you this morning. First, I just wanted to share another accolade that we received for our staff in the Department of Transportation and Development. Last week, the permitting agent for the Clackamas 800 Radio Group, the C-800 Group, sent us an email about the service provided from our Building Codes staff, in this case Shirley Cass Crosby, who is a permit specialist in the department. And the note read, "I just wanted to take a few minutes to inform management regarding the excellent service I received from Shirley Cass Crosby. Shirley is so knowledgeable and customer-friendly, it's actually a joy," let me say that again, "a joy, to submit permits to the county. Not only does she provide that great service at the counter, but she is also extremely responsive to email messages, always detailing all of the requirements of my projects. Hopefully Shirley is appreciated as much by management," and she is, "as much as she is by her customers." So I just wanted to express my compliments. And of course, these compliments are not actually unusual, because of our customer-focused staff over at Transportation and Development. But we don't often hear that somebody believes it's a joy to submit permits. That's quite an unusual thing for someone to share. So many thanks to Shirley and her excellent service to the Building Codes Division and DTD, and for their continued focus on customer service. I also just wanted to take a moment to thank all of those folks in the departments and offices, the staff who participated in the Service and Coordination Fair that was conducted last week here at the county. The event brought together elected officials and representatives from our cities here to the campus, and was really geared towards improving city-county collaboration, increasing awareness of our services, and strengthening our relationships. We received an awful lot of positive feedback from the folks who attended. I wanted to also express a special word of thanks to the great team we've got in Public and Governmental Affairs for the work they did in putting all that together. It was tremendous. Finally, I wanted to make sure Commissioners are aware that very shortly, here on the Red Soils Campus, you'll be observing some unusual activity from your office windows, looking towards the south. We've got an area there that is now enclosed with temporary fencing, and we are now, and have actually received, the first delivery of trusses from the Pickathon event that was conducted, I guess it was by Happy Valley out that way. And these trusses are being brought here, then, to then be assembled. There'll be about 700 of them to be assembled into sleeping shelters for veterans who are participating in our Veterans Transitional Shelter project. I wanted to let you know that that's going on. Next week, there'll be a matter of consideration in front of the Oregon City City Commission, where they'll be considering and granting the official permission for us to be able to conduct that work. It'll occur over the course of the next three months or so, where we'll be receiving these trusses and then assembling them, and then delivering them to a site that will be operated for shelter services for veterans. I wanted to let you know that. We also will have at next week's board meeting, an item on the consent agenda, which will be a draft agreement with Catholic charities for the delivery of community development block grant dollars to help in the architectural and pre-development work that's necessary to go in for the development of that shelter project. And I want to make sure you knew about it. We don't have a, an issues session next week because of the fair, so I'm letting you know about that item that's on the consent agenda upcoming at this meeting today. So, and that's all I have to share with you this morning.
It'd be great if we kept track of the time involved in building a pod itself, just so we have some idea what, you know, if you're paying a normal rate, or what the volunteer hours are. And I'd love to help, too. I know how to smash my fingers as good as anybody.
Yeah.
Is there electricity out there?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay, because I was thinking I have some tools that might help, compressors and stuff that might help.
Yeah, we'll be inviting county employees to volunteer as well for that effort, as well as others in the, in the community. So, the idea is to showcase the construction of these and, you know, make, make a point of demonstrating our commitment to veterans' housing and sheltering. So, good.
Great. Okay, first up, Paul?
Now, I just want, on this opportunity we have out here with the trusses in the building, I just want to, looking forward to our cooperation with our local jurisdictions and helping making this happen. I think that's going to be an important thing, an opportunity for us to... I think that's going to be an important thing, an opportunity for us to showcase or highlight that, you know, number one, the need, and also the collaboration amongst nonprofits and the jurisdictions and everyone trying to help those that are, you know, in need. So, great opportunity to capitalize on what would be a wasted product if we didn't use these trusses. So that's another thing where we're taking advantage of something as opposed to just having those things deconstructed and tossed out in the, in our landfills. This week, I've been working with ODOT and in a capacity of, of what we're going to do about our transportation needs, I-205 and others, and also in the capacity of the Region One Area Commission on Transportation as we set up the September meeting, which happens to be on September 11th. And we are arranging prior, the meeting will be held, once a year we do on, on location as opposed at ODOT. So this year, it'll be held in Clackamas County, and we'll be hosting the meeting at Camp Withacome preceded by a tour of the Sunrise Corridor, some existing projects, and out to Damascus Way bus tour, some of those leaders to see what the Sunrise Corridor is. And I had to reckon back to when I first came here in the late 70s to what the Sunset Corridor was at that time and what the Sunrise Corridor was at that time. And I remember how small and similar the Sunset Corridor was, Highway 26 was back then. And you look at what it is today, multiple lanes each way. It's been developed quite a ways. And as I went out to the boring and dull day yesterday afternoon, I was reminded how underdeveloped that Sunrise Corridor is, and one lane each way. And as soon as I hit the end of 212 where the new Sunrise Phase One Corridor ended, it was bumper to bumper all the way to boring. All the way to boring. It was bumper to bumper. And it's just, strikes me, and when we take that bus tour, we'll be coming down that way against the, opposite of the traffic at that time of day, but we'll be able to see firsthand. But it's just a reminder, like where, how far Washington County has done, how successful they have been in getting those improvements on 26, and what we need to have, you know, a bite of the apple, so to speak, and making sure we get the next phase done. Lots of questions, you know, people talking about the House bill or the 2017-3 that was passed by the legislature, still awaiting the governor's signature on that, and hoping people can understand what we're going to get and what we, and I think we need to kind of take a step back and understand what solutions, such as 205 and, and other areas, because now we have, as a result of traffic counts I've been receiving in the last couple of days on side roads, because when you don't have the freeways congestion, people pull off the freeway, whether it's I-5, whether they're pulling off at the Aurora exit, or pulling off at the Canby exit, or wherever, Wilsonville Road exit, wherever they pull off, those side roads are now absorbing a lot of that overload. And those are also bumper to bumper. We're hearing from our cities and our community members about what that means to them and how, how disruptive that is when they have tractor-trailers going through housing, housing areas. That's not what our, our local roads were meant to be, but that's really what's happening. So I'm looking at some numbers that indicate traffic counts and indicate that our, our side roads are being used. So capacity is something as our area continues to grow, and, you know, we have a lot of opportunities to, not only that, but also in the Sunrise Corridor, have housing, create more housing, create more jobs, create more opportunities. And I think that really is the lowest-hanging fruit for the county for economic development. And call it a double win or a triple win that if we were to get those developments, we're able to build housing where it, it's sorely needed. And hopefully, housing that's affordable so that we have a mixture of housing stock for both small families, large families, and those that are not so, not so fortunate. So that's what I have, working hard on that. And just let you know that we've, you know, we've also drove through a lot of potholes on the, all the way out to Boring and back. So I know that I did talk to ODOT, and, you know, they are putting, doing some work on 212 to fix some of those potholes out there. But we need to be mindful that 20, this bill does give us more money for maintenance. It gives ODOT more money for maintenance. And absent that, we might have to live with those potholes if, if that bill does not make it to fruition. So we know the legislature passed it, governor needs to sign it, and absent any opposition, if that makes it through the period, we'll be able to fix a lot of those roads and solve some of those problems we have out there.
Great. I, I wonder if the Canby ferry count is up too, because people, I took Canby ferry to avoid that traffic all the time. It's four bucks and it's a lot faster. Sonya?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we had our last commission meeting and looked at moving forward transitional housing for veterans by changing our zoning, I have been reaching out to our different veterans' constituencies and different groups to look at where are we, where do we need to go, and how do veterans feel about where we are in Clackamas County? And I've had a really, really good conversations, and I've been sharing that with our county administrator, Krupp, which is sharing it also with the rest of our commissioners. And I am really focused on how do we make sure that the policy that we promote in Clackamas County really meets the need and meets the need of some of our most honored and also challenged citizens in a way that promotes dignity? And I know that my fellow commissioners support that effort. It's a wonderful place to be, and I will continue my quest, I will continue sharing, and I am going to reaffirm what Chair Bernard has always said, is we can do better and we will do better, and we will work together to be better for all of the folks we really care about.
Great. So we do not have a meeting next week. We're, we are meeting at the county fair, I believe, Thursday.
The regular business meeting.
If you come before 10, it's free. So try and get there before 10 and enjoy the, the fair. Well, first up, let me see. I guess I'll just go right into this, and that is first, small grants.
Well, no, do.
What?
Do the fair first.
Okay, in our business meeting that we're having.
I have to come back and do this.
So on, on August 17th, Clackamas County Commission Business Meet will be held at Clackamas County Fair. The meeting will be held at 10:00 a.m. Thursday, August 17th, at the main lawn stage. Visitors to the fair will get in free up till 10:00 a.m. if they enter the red and blue gate. Parking is $5 for everyone. We have no control over that. We hope you will attend the meeting and spend the rest of the day enjoying the great county fair. Hope to see you there, and also don't forget the rodeo. Please visit Clackamas County Fair website for information and schedule events at www.clockamas.us/fair/ The next item is our small grant program. We have allocated $250,000 for small grants this year. The goal of small grants is to help the most vulnerable families, seniors, and other, and others meet their basic needs such as food assistance and abuse prevention. Priorities will be given to projects regarding, regarding food, housing, and homelessness prevention. Applications are due by August 21st, 5:00 p.m. To apply, fill out the online application at a website on the screen. For more information, please contact Caroline Hill at 503-655-8251. And by the way, this is nor, this is groups that provide these services. Not just anyone can get a grant, so you have to, you have to be a service provider. And we've done a lot with this program, and, and we do try to spread it out. But one of the things we're doing this year is trying to map, well, we're not trying, we have successfully mapped the most vulnerable, challenged areas in the county, which are, some are within cities or near cities and rural communities. And that, our goal is to focus our investments there first. And, and we are, we are down to where, I'm going to bring a map to our C-4 Retreat. We have a C-4 Retreat this weekend. Dan Chandler has that, and that has really got that down really specifically. And, you know, some, some communities, for example, when I was mayor, I, I don't know that we had the opportunity to really focus our investments, which were smaller than the county, in areas where hunger or homelessness or domestic violence is more prevalent. And so I think that's really, I, I think this is the, could be the most important grant year we've ever had to, because we focused in that way. And next year, we'll even get better, and someday we'll make that amount even bigger and be able to help more people. But right now, I, I'm really excited about the mapping that we've done. Other than, also, you can pick up this flyer at the fairgrounds too. I'm sure you can read this.
Yeah.
This one here is really exciting. But the fair is always great, and the rodeo is great. And, you know, we have some opportunities over the next couple of years to try to increase the value of that, of the fair, of the rodeo, of the event center, and we'll be talking about that here in the near future. We've set up an opportunity for the Event Center Board to meet with SBDC, right? The Small Business Development Group to work on a, a financial plan, a marketing plan, and various things. Because Canby has a, this, we have this nice piece of land that the fair's on in the city of Canby that could potential, potentially be a, just an, generate a lot of economic opportunity. We have to make sure that we invest properly and that we have a good plan to move forward on that. We haven't done much lately over the last few years. We are putting some money into the grandstands, which one particular one is probably unsafe, and they're working on it right now. So look forward to you joining us at the Clackamas County Fair and, and auction. There's also an auction, which I intend to buy something at. With that, we'll turn it over to Sonya. She has a, what is that?
Cultural Affairs.
Art and cultural activities in the county. The Oregon City Festival of the Arts, a celebration of visual and performing arts. Come enjoy art, food, live music, children, hands-on art, and more, Saturday and Sunday, August 12th and 13th, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center in Oregon City. And also, the West Lynn Book Festival, a fun-filled, free family event celebrating Oregon's authors. Come enjoy children's books, comics, mystery, adults, science fiction, poetry, fiction, and nonfiction books. As an added bonus, there will be several guest speakers. That is Sunday, August 13th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 218-60 to 219, 21890, Will Lamitt Drive in West Lynn. For more information about any event, go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamasartsalliance.org.
Great. With that, we will adjourn. Thank you.